Good evening, everyone. Call to order, the City of Urbana Committee of the Whole Meeting for February 6, 2023. I'm going to wait 10 more seconds. Okay, will the clerk please call the rule?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of the minutes from December 12, 2022, a special meeting minutes, and December 19, 2023 minutes. Is there any substantial changes? Seen none.
I'll move approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Moved to approval.
Second.
Seconded by Sharice. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All against say nay. It's seen none. That passes. Those minutes are approved. Any additions to the agenda? Seen none. Next will be presentations and public input, and we will start with a mayoral proclamation. Diane, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a proclamation by the mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas, National African American History Month, known as Black History Month, is an occasion to rediscover the enduring stories of African Americans and the gifts of freedom, purpose, and opportunity they have bestowed on past, present, and future generations. And whereas, it's also a time to celebrate the contributions of Urbana African Americans who've enriched our community today and in our past. And whereas, the 2022-2023 school year marks 56 years since the integration of Urbana Public Schools, designating Urbana as the first integrated public school system in Illinois. This act of civic bravery, which was led by the Dr. Ellis Six, has helped people of all backgrounds to gain confidence, courage, and the faith to pursue their own dreams, no matter who they are or where they're from. And whereas, February 1, 2023, marks the second anniversary of the passing of the city council's resolution committing to end structural racism and achieve racial equity. And the City of Urbana acknowledges that in recognizing our own bias and prejudices, we stand with those who value a just and inclusive community, and the need for diversity and opportunity in Urbana and in our country. And whereas, the city recognizes the ongoing struggles that Urbana African American residents continue to endure, and denounces all ideologies that promote racial division. Now, therefore, I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as African American History Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois.
Thank you, Mayor. Now will be public input. You may approach the microphone at the front. You'll have five minutes, and please give your name for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marlin Mitchell. I'm from Champaign. I'm here to represent First Followers, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about one of the agenda items, which is the resolution for the CHODO program. So this year, or this upcoming year, the CHODO program is going to be the second time that, if passed, that we'll be receiving the funds. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about how that program or those funds have really, really helped our organization kind of build a little internal capacity in regards to housing renovation projects here in Champaign, Urbana. So the CHODO program, actually, it serves as a foundation for funds where we are able to provide for our targeted group of folks that we're helping learn building construction trades. We're very intentional in targeting 18- to 24-year-old African American males who have been impacted by community violence or the criminal justice system. And to date, we have 10 young men that are participating in the renovation of the Wiley House that you all provided us maybe about a year ago. So we're very excited about this, but just historically speaking, we've been doing this GoMap program for about, since 2017. And over the years, I've been able to see it grow. I've seen the young men come and go, and some of them have grown into gainful employment. And so it doesn't only serve as a point of building construction trades, but it's also an opportunity for them to come in and be mentored. Mentored upon life skills, sometimes, or it has been, just recently, we just finished our last year's, one of our anniversary for one of our cohorts, where I had two individuals who had, young men who had come in and got their high school diploma. And without this particular program, we would not, they would not have gotten a high school diploma. So they finished their high school diploma. I also had another two young men that went to Parkland-Swift program, who have received certification in the HVAC program out at Parkland. So not only does it serve as building construction, but it also provides me an opportunity to get to know the young man because of their relationship building that we need to have as an intergenerational divide. Right now, I think we have 10 individuals that are in the program, and right now, we're really grooming them to go into some of the building construction trades, whether that's union labor, or just if something that they want to do on entrepreneurship endeavor. So it's been a really great, great, great program, and with these funds, we'll continue to build on that. And of course, we can use more funding. But as a coalition for the CHODO program, the City of Champaign, with their ARPA funds, has also provided us with some funds to run this program. So we're in the process of just building it out, and hopefully, we can become, we can begin to institutionalize this as we go along, because we all know that this particular demographic of young men are not being, do not have the resources that they need at times. So I just wanted to just give you all an update on that. Hopefully, I'll come before you once we get the Wiley project fully renovated, and then we get it out for whether we put it back on the market, whether it'd be an affordable housing space. So just want to thank you all for your considerations.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council and the mayor. My name is Dennis Roberts. I live in Urbana, and I serve the community as chairman of the Sister City Committee, Urbana Sister Cities Program. And I'm here with some really good news, some exciting news. As you remember, back in September, we came to visit you as we announced that the Sister City Program student exchange, a language class exchange between the students at Uni High School and Téonville, our France European Sister City, over the last year, was awarded the 2022 Champion of Youth Award by the Illinois Sister City Association. Quite an honor. Well, as a spinoff of that interaction, the students of Téonville and the Uni High School are interested in making their first physical student exchange. And as a fundraiser to finance the travel of the French students to the United States, hopefully this summer or very soon into the fall, the students put together a bilingual calendar, and it features some of the topics and events that they studied during the last year, what they learned from those studies. And it also celebrates the different national holidays that are celebrated in both America and France. And the students put this calendar together completely on their own, and they did it so that the printing was done in mid-December. And just three days ago, I received a box at my door. I've received 50 calendars. So this is going to be a fundraising project that the Urbana Sister City Program is going to sponsor. We're going to have a booth at the Winter Market this Saturday, and one again two weeks from that, so that's September 11th and the 25th. And we would probably do another one, but I'm going to be traveling, so it's not going to be possible to do three in a row. The donations are all going to go to support the travel plans for the Téonville Sister Cities Program. So I've brought seven calendars and one for the mayor to give to you, and I hope that you'll consider supporting the Sister City Program and the travel of the students to Urbana in, we hope, the near future. So I'm going to just read very briefly a little message that I received from Marie-Ange Andreou. She says, "Kind regards. We wish you a Happy New Year in 2023. All the best to you and Illinois, for the City Hall, and Lycée Charlemagne, and my family. With our best memories in Urbana, warmest wishes to you, Mayor Diane Wolf-Marlin, Marie-Ange." So anyways, that's a warm greeting from France, and I'm going to step forward and give each of you a calendar, and maybe get a picture of the mayor and I getting a calendar. So I do hope that some of you will come by the Winter Market and stop at their booth and continue to let everybody know that there are about 42 calendars left.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Lenhoff. Can y'all hear me okay? Thank you. I'm with the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, and I just wanted to come and say a few remarks because I was a little bit concerned about some of the discussion at your last meeting regarding healthcare consumers' ARPA grant application. I was especially concerned about the discussion regarding our staffing needs, which then led to an approximate $40,000 reduction in funding from the median, which I think was just under $511,000. I do understand why that y'all have difficult decisions to make, and we will be grateful for any funding we do receive, but I just wanted to clarify some issues that came up. First, I wanted to apologize about the confusion regarding the term "special populations." It's sort of a term of art in social services and public health and stuff, and I use it in both grant applications, ARPA and HHI. However, there are many different special populations, and with regard to the Urbana ARPA sub-populations that I was referring to, it was for low-income seniors, low- or no-income people with disabilities, and low-income immigrants. HHI is focused more on the homeless population. We applied for funding for staffing for four years. The reason we did that is because the estimated unmet need among these populations in the City of Urbana, and how much time it will take to train staff, get them working independently, and how much time it would take to serve the current unmet need, as well as the growing need over time, is what led me to put in for four years. For example, we estimate that there are approximately 1,000 lower-income seniors that could benefit from our help to apply for Medicare-related programs, such as Medicare Savings and Medicare Extra Help. The Social Security Administration estimates that the Medicare Savings Program can help a senior save over $5,300 a year. The Medicare Extra Help Program can help them save over $2,000 a year. And these are programs that have to be applied for every single year. Now, once you do the first application, the applications in subsequent years are easier and less time-consuming, but it takes about four hours to apply someone for these programs. There are 2,080 work hours in a year. At four hours for these applications, we could serve about 520 seniors in the first year out of the estimated 1,000. The population of seniors is going to continue to increase over time, but reducing a low-income senior's out-of-pocket expenses by over $7,000 per year can certainly help them with economic stability, the ability to afford food, the ability to afford healthcare, and all kinds of other things, which are part of the goal of the ARPA program. With regard to helping people with disabilities apply for SSI or SSDI, that process can take months and even years. We estimate over 4,000 people in Urbana living with disabling conditions, many of them do not have sources of income like SSI or SSDI. An initial application can take over 40 hours of staff time. So I won't go into more statistics, but I just wanted to help explain why I applied for four years. It would also give us time to document our work, show the outcomes, and then use that documentation to seek additional financial support. And we do have a track record of doing that. Even when we first hired staff through grant-funded programs, we have retained them. I've never had to lay off a staff member. And we have staff, three staff with over 20 years, two over eight years, and our newest staff member is over five years. Lastly, I just wanted to comment that, no, not lastly, sorry. I wanted to comment that we view our relationship with funders as a partnership in order to meet the goals of the stated funding. So we view you as partners, and we hope we can have a discussion about, you know, how to proceed once you decide on the final amount of funding. If we cannot be funded for all three positions for four years, what I, as executive director, would like to do is to work with whatever funding is available. If it was closer to the median, what I would do is I would hire two staff members for as close to four years as possible, or I'd like to see the contract be for four years, but give me the time to raise additional funds. And then as those staff members get proficient, some of the caseload for one of the other populations could be shifted to an existing staff member. Anyway, thank you for hearing me out. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to talk?
Good evening. My name is Brian Dolliner. I live at 303 West Locust in Urbana. I wanted to address the issue of the pending police union contract. It's my one night I had off of daddy duty and other obligations. I could have a chance. I know it's not on the agenda, per se, but I wanted to come out and speak on the issue of the police union contract, particularly in light of recent events in Memphis. I think there's, again, a need to remind ourselves of the ongoing problem of police brutality and misconduct. My understanding is that the police union contract would preclude certain oversight by the Urbana Police Review Board. The review board itself has been trying to revamp its mission and pursue greater measures of oversight, accountability, use of force of the police. These are initiatives that were really kicked off post George Floyd a couple of years ago and have been in motion since, developing several proposals for greater teeth for the police review board, is my understanding. And from what I have heard, there's measures in the police union contract that would preclude, prevent the police review board from taking greater initiative for oversight. So my hope is that there's a chance for city council to revisit the union contract and not allow some of these measures to go through, which will stop further accountability. There's a tendency for us to, after the George Floyd incidents and videos and protests die out, I think there's a tendency for us to go back to our typical modus operandi. But again and again, we're reminded by these videotapes, by these incidents, this is an ongoing problem that's structural and systemic. It is not going away until we prevent kind of measures that we're trying to put in place. In fact, Urbana has its own problem currently. I'm a local cop watchdog and reporter. I'm currently writing a story about Officer John Frankelmont in Urbana, who has a tendency for throwing local residents in the back of his squad car face-first with their hands handcuffed behind their back. This is a pending case. Officer Frankelmont has been terminated. The police union contract is fighting to get Frankelmont his job back. This is still an ongoing issue, ongoing case in Urbana. And these are not the kind of cops that we want on our force, but yet the police union is still standing by their man. So this story's about to come out in the next couple of weeks, and I think expresses the greater urgency of Urbana to revisit the police union contract. Thanks so much for listening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, seen none. Oh, well, wait a minute. I have some to read, or does anybody else have some to read? Okay, let me see here. Okay. Sarah Blanco and Luke Lee and Morrison O'Gallagher would like this read into the record. "I urge all city council members to vote against the Fraternal Order of Police Contract for 2023-2026. It is unacceptable to give the Urbana Police Department nearly $1 million in raises, particularly after the city has already allocated $1.34 million in bonuses. This contract also fails to address critical issues, including the use of excessive force, witness coercion, de-escalation, and civilian oversight. Council must vote no on this contract and work with the mayor to pressure the Urbana Police Department to return to the bargaining table to remove the restrictions on the civilian police review board and add the basic disciplinary measures necessary to hold police accountable for misconduct. As concerned members of the Urbana community, we ask that you vote no on Resolution 2022-12-091R." And does anybody else have anything? Nope. Okay, so that will conclude public input. Next item is staff report, first quarter 2023 update on the mayor-council strategic goals. And Carol Mitten, is that you? Okay, go ahead.
That's me. So I would just note that for each of the action steps, they all have a, there's a sheet. It's the cumulative reports that we've been making, and those are in the packet. I just wanted to call out a few things, and then if anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them or get some follow-up for you. So as you know, we're looking forward to some ARPA allocations for several of the mayor-council goals, so we're watching, as well as everyone else who's made an application, to see how that turns out. We've selected a contractor for the public safety review. That firm is Barry Dunn. The group of folks that were on the selection committee are continuing to work to refine the scope we met last week with them, and I think will be having an official kickoff in the next month or so. So we're looking forward to that. I think they're, I think they're going to really, I think they're a good fit for us. They have incredible experience that's relevant to us, and they're going to, I think they're going to stretch us in the kinds of ways that we had wanted to be stretched and challenged. You'll note that the ABLE training, the active bystandership for law enforcement training, the Train the Trainer activities are going on this month in February, and that should be completed this fiscal year, so by June 30. And that's the ongoing commitment from the police to de-escalation and implementing that. The council approved the first round of allocation for home ARP a couple of weeks ago, so that's making progress on that. The infrastructure codes, the subdivision and land development codes, you will see they will be before you for approval before the fiscal year is over, and we're going to start doing some briefings because it's going to be a lot to digest. But we're making a lot of progress on that. It's been years in the making because those are lengthy and complicated. On the equal projects, 10 of those projects were selected. You approved what, the recommendations from BPAC, 10 are in implementation, and then there were additional five that were approved for further study. A vendor has been selected to install electric vehicle charging stations at no cost to the city, and they're going to be pursuing grant funding in order to accomplish that. So that's progress there. We've been working, as you know, on a business list, and we have that all consolidated from the various city sources. And now staff are considering using CitizenServe, which is an existing tool that we have to create some kind of business registry so we can keep that list fresh and up to date, and also have contact information in the event that we should need to reach out to businesses. And then the last thing that I'll make a note of is that the Public Realms Study, we'll have a presentation either later in February or early March, and some of us have gotten a preview of that as well. And it's very exciting, some of the recommendations that they will be bringing forward for consideration. And it helps that we have, that you all approved putting money from TIF number two into Central TIF, so we'll have some implementation money. So those are the highlights that I wanted to focus on, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I appreciate having this laid out, and it looks like we've made some good progress on most of these. Just had two things. One was about the public safety review. I appreciate the work on that, and I'm really looking forward to that happening and seeing the results of it. I was wondering if it would be possible to consider if they could come to council, maybe even remotely if need be, but I think it would be great to know who we're working with and have the public kind of know what's going on, and then also bring up some ideas. There's some things, you know, I and I imagine others would like to add, you know, could we consider this? Could we look at this option? And I don't want it to be too late, like they've already done this great review, and then ask, well, did we consider this thing? So I don't know if it's possible to have kind of just a touch base with them before they get into too much of their work.
That's, the official kickoff, they will, at least one representative will be present, and I imagine that the team will be introduced in some manner.
Oh, at a council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then the other one was about the SWIFT program. We had the goal of collaborate to create a robust marketing program for SWIFT as kind of supporting that one, since they said they don't need additional funding, but marketing help would be useful. And then this quarter is a recommendation to update this goal. I just wonder if there's more details on why, what's changed, and if there's a thought of what update there might be, or if maybe that's a later discussion?
The, I can tell you why. The why is that we were going to be trying to help market the program because they were under-enrolled in the program, and now they're fully enrolled. So the, so what we had originally thought about doesn't seem germane anymore, which is why we think we need to change it, but I don't, at the moment, have a specific suggestion, but...
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
And why?
Yeah, I would definitely be open to a discussion at some point, you know, hopefully with some representatives from the program about how we could pivot to support whatever their current needs are. Thank you.
Anybody else? Chandra?
Thanks for this update. I wanted to ask about Strategy Three under Strategic Area Number One, action step promote communication and outreach to individual neighborhood groups. There's no progress on that. I'm just wondering, like, could there actually have been progress and just, like, I was just thinking about the comp plan things and getting input about downtown stuff. Like, I think that that is, could fall under that. Maybe we're not thinking broad enough for this. And then also, if those things aren't considered, you know, what could we be doing to reach out to individual neighborhoods and such? I think, you know, I don't think there's a reason for no progress to date on that, this portion. It's something that could be easily done.
Right. Um... And I appreciate you thinking more broadly about that than maybe we have been. I think when we had discussed this, when the, when the council was doing its goal setting, it was really trying to just do more general engagement with some of the civic associations and so on. And we, we haven't just done that. We've done it for, for specific purposes, like you suggested. And we should probably document that. But the main thing that's wrong with this, this one is that it wasn't assigned to anyone in particular. And so, you know, things like that get lost. And that's, that's why we haven't had any specific progress on that. But it was really just trying to build up a more, a more regular kind of communication with the neighborhood groups that we, that we really haven't done. But it's not that we're not engaging with them on specific topics.
Right. Because it says all departments. So that means, like, each department should be thinking when it does projects or when it does whatever, how can we reach out to the, to the neighborhood and the community to incorporate their ideas, their input, or whatever? Because it's being done, like, even through Public Works, when they put up the sign for, like, you know, meetings, neighborhood meetings and such. So we're doing things. I just think we're thinking too narrowly about that.
I'm glad you mentioned that. We'll, we'll do better, and then we'll have more to report.
Thank you.
Diane.
I appreciate that perspective, and you're right. So we will. We can, we'll actually have a very long list, and I would include all the outreach that Betsy Alfonso has done with our Neighborhood Watch groups as well. So she's been in every single neighborhood and with every group as well. So, thank you. We'll expand.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you, Carol. We'll move on to the next item. New business, beginning with ordinance number 2023-02-004, An Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Six Omnibus. And you're going to present. Thank you.
Ally.
I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay. All right. So, good evening, everyone. So this is a pretty short and straightforward one, so I'll go over it pretty briefly. So under the General Operating Fund, we are reallocating available funds from staffing vacancies to use outside services. So one, under Executive Legal Division, we are transferring $16,500 from vacancy savings to pay for temporary contract employee to help with admin work. And then we are transferring from the same personal line item, $15,000 to cover any potential legal fees related to the car property tax lawsuit that is still ongoing. And then under Public Works, we are transferring $85,000 using vacancy savings from vacant electrician positions to continue our contracts with champagne, signal, and lighting through the end of this fiscal year. And then there's also one thing that I would like to note. So in the memo, it says Capital Replacement and Improvement Fund. It should say Local Motor Fuel Tax Fund. So the exhibit is correct. That is attached to the ordinance. So I would just like to point that out. So under Local Motor Fuel Tax Fund, we are increasing $100,000 to the legal services budget to cover additional costs related to the Windsor Road litigation. And then several changes related to the TIF II fund closure. So in December 31 of '22, TIF II expired. So we did a budget amendment to revise estimates in TIF II fund and transfer the entire balance to Central TIF. So one thing that didn't get accounted for when we calculated the projected estimate was the final property tax distribution that was received after the budget amendments, a budget amendment was approved. And so, and in addition to this budget amendment, we are transferring $1,000 to Post-TIF Closure Fund, where we will pay the, for any outstanding invoices related to the consulting services for the TIF II closure. So this amendment would just revise the projected estimates that we made in the budget amendment to reflect actual amounts, and then transfer the remaining balance to Central TIF. And then lastly, under Equipment Services Fund, so during last year's budget process, the machinery line item was not updated. So this amendment is just to correct that. And so we are increasing machinery lines budget by $48,000. So that will be used to purchase items scheduled for this replacement, for this year's replacement. And that is all. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Mary else?
Hi, thank you. So I have two questions. My first question is with the Windsor Road legal fees. It's $100,000 that we're kind of putting in the bank to, to make sure that we cover those fees. So perhaps this isn't a question for you, but perhaps it's a question for Carol. What does this mean in terms of our capital replacement plan? If we move this $100,000 off of the local, because we use the Local Motor Fuel Tax Fund to do capital projects? Is that gonna delay any of our plans for projects?
Tim's gonna answer.
As of now, that $100,000 can come out of the fund balance. It's not set to delay anything that we have on the books to date. If we have to continue revising this and increasing it, absolutely, it'll affect our capital investments. We'll be looking at that as we go into our capital improvement plan for next year that will be kicking off here in the next month or so.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And then my second question had to do with the Fleet Machinery Equipment Replacement. Is that usually on VERF? Is that something that we can ask her?
Not the ones in Fleet. So they have a separate schedule.
They have a separate schedule? So we're not putting money away every year towards that?
No.
So the $48,000 is coming out of our general fund?
That is coming out of Fleet's fund, or the Equipment Services Fund.
But we're not moving funny from, money from the Equipment?
Between funds.
Right? Between funds?
No.
We're taking it from the general fund?
So we're taking it from the funds, fund balance, from Equipment Services Fund.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll move ordinance number 2023-02-004, and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Six Omnibus, onto City Council for approval on the regular agenda.
I'll second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Any more discussion? Seen none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Kersey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is, oh, thank you. Next up is Resolution Number 2023-02-00, I mean, 006R, A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement. Say that three times. Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, it looks like tenant-based rental assistance for the year 2022 to 2023. Sheila, that is you, I believe. Go ahead.
Yep. This is the annual allocation request from Champagne County Regional Plan Commission to fund the tenant-based rental assistance. Champagne County is a part of the Home Consortium, and so each year, their portion of the funding, they set aside to do the rental assistance program. And this year, they have requested $150,000, and they are estimating that will serve a minimum of 12 people, depending upon what rents are, is how many we can serve.
Any questions? Go ahead, Grace. Oh, thank you. Mary else?
So Sheila, just to be clear, the, these are the county's funds? Their allocation portion of the home funds?
Yes. We get an allocation. And because of population changes, the county is a very small number now. It's like 8% of the funds. And so the Home Consortium Tech Committee, which is the county, Urbana and Champagne, have set aside each year what we think they need. And this is their allocation for this year. They, they think they'll utilize the 150.
And it's coming to City Council because we're the people who oversee the home funds.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Grace.
I do have one, but I'm hesitant because I don't know if I can word this as well. We'll see if Sheila or anyone else knows or recalls what I'm trying to ask here. Because I remember a previous conversation, and we were looking at some of the spending plans. And we had mentioned that we couldn't use some pot of money for TBRA. So we made a commitment that, I think I had $250,000 in my head. And I think we've already committed some of that. That's why I'm hesitant asking the question. Because I remember a thing of we were wanting to allocate $250,000, I thought, to TBRA, that that was kind of a missing piece of another funding pot we were limited by.
Are you talking about, like, in the two-by-two meetings that we had?
No. In, in council, when we were discussing the plans, the spending plans, I think for these, like, last year. And I think we already did allocate some extra TBRA. That's why I'm hesitant asking the question. You remember what I'm talking about?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay, I'll try and do some research and see if I remember what I'm talking about.
Grace, I vaguely remember what you're thinking of. But I, we need to go back to the minutes and find it.
The last allocation we gave was $175,000 to cover people impacted by COVID. And then there was a special program manual that went along with that. But $250,000 for this program. We had set aside, maybe this is what you're thinking of, for the HHI applications. We did not set aside home ARP money for TBRA. We set aside regular home funding for it. We did not get any requests for that during the home ARP application or the HHI application process. So I think that's what you might be referring to. Because we did set aside $250,000 for that, plus money to run the program. But since we didn't receive any requests, we were just leaving the funding in the home balance.
Thank you. Yes, I think that was it. Thanks for the patience, getting with me there on what I was getting at. That's, yes, what I was thinking about. So thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions?
I have a question, but I'll make a motion.
Please.
All right. I will move Resolution Number 2023-02-006R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of the Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement for Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, TBRA for fiscal year 2022-2023 to City Council on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? Seen none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, so what we're gonna do now is we're gonna go through these next six resolutions. And Sheila will present each resolution. But after each resolution, you're welcome to ask questions. But then we're gonna go to the next resolution, have that presented, ask questions, present the next resolution. And what we're hoping is to bundle them into an omnibus motion so we have just one vote for the next six resolutions. So go ahead, Sheila.
Sure. This, these requests, all six of them, are for our CHODO set aside. As you might recall, the home funding requires us to set aside 15% of our allocation, and it can only be awarded to community housing development organizations, or CHODOs. This year, we had $120,000. We reached out to our two certified agencies and requested they submit an application for funding. So First Followers, prior to giving any funding, the first thing we have to do is certify that they've met all the requirements of being a CHODO. So number three is just that they've provided all the documentation that's required. We would like to certify them as a CHODO, which then will allow them to receive funding.
Any questions? Okay. Onto the next one, Resolution Number 2023-02-008R.
First Followers did request funding. Staff is recommending $30,000 to be used as part of their development agreement to continue their work at 1407 Wiley. And that is 1/4 of the, the allocation.
Any questions to that? Grace.
Thanks for the presentation. I appreciate having these organizations as CHODO to work in the development here. I was wondering if you could just explain some of the selection and thought process behind the split for how the funding was split?
Habitat asked for funding for three properties, and First Followers asked for one. And so we split the money up by four properties. It's not enough for any one agency to 100% complete, but it's enough for them to go wigs.
And then I had a question about the operating funding? Because that seems to go beyond the 120 total, right?
It is. It's a separate pot of money. Yep.
And where's that coming from? Did you already say?
It's also from the home funds. And we can allocate no more than 5% of our allocation. So it's separate from that CHODO set aside.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Chandra.
I was curious, what is, we can talk about this offline if it's too much, but abandoned properties program? Like, is that an Urbana program, or what is that?
It's a program that the City of Urbana participated in with the Illinois Housing Development Authority, where we received funding to acquire properties that were abandoned. 1407 Wiley was one. We've done two or three through that program. And then we have turned around and either sold them to a low-income home buyer or transferred this one to First Followers to use for affordable rental.
Is there a listing of the properties in Urbana that's part of this program?
I can get that for you. That program was closed out prior to me coming here, so I'm not as familiar with it, but...
Is closed out? Like, it does, it's not funded, or it's not?
No, it, it was a limited term. And Ida, Urbana used all their funds, and Ida's no longer offering the program.
I'd still be curious as to the properties listed. Thank you.
What do you have? Oh, Grace.
Got a quick thing, just sneaking a comment. Just want to say thanks for the work that First Followers is doing, and good to see Marlin here. And I appreciate that we have, you know, first, our Habitat as a big, you know, broader organization. And then we also have a local organization to be a CHODO here and do some of that training. So I think that's a really awesome opportunity. So thanks for them.
Okay. We will go on to Resolution Number Five, Resolution Number 2023-02-009R.
This is the agreement to give operating funding to First Followers for the 1407 Wiley project. It allows them to put staff, staffing cost or operating cost that they have in order to implement the program. We're giving $6,500.
Any questions? They seen none. We'll go to Number Six, Resolution Number 2023-02-0110R.
This is the resolution to certify Habitat for Humanity. They have submitted all of the certification documents required. And then, like I stated earlier, prior to us allocating money, we have to certify that they are a CHODO.
Any questions? Seen none. We'll go to Number Seven, Resolution Number 2023-02-011R.
This is a request from Habitat to, this one is for their operating money. And again, we gave them $6,500 per unit for a total of $19,500.
Any questions on that? Grace.
Thanks. I have one that's an, an issue. I don't know if there's a clear-cut answer. I think there's not a clear-cut answer now. But I'm gonna keep asking until we have some kind of something resolved of the issue of area median income that I understand that we have to use, as far as HUD and things. But just wanted to point out that with, you know, what we're calling affordable of $1,100 a month, someone would have to make a salary of over $42,000 a year. And that's 113% of Urbana median income. So I know that that's, we're limited by a lot of federal things. but I'm just going to keep at least raising the issue and hope that we can find some other solutions, because in some ways, it feels like what we're thinking that we're adding for affordable housing is not actually affordable for Urbana, and I think we need to find some way to figure out how to navigate that with the federal requirements. So-
Well, and keep in mind, that's a maximum. Typically, we serve with all of our programs. We serve people between 30 and 50% of the AMI.
Great. Thank you. I'm definitely curious if there's any other suggestions that you have on future stuff, on how we can make affordable even more affordable. Thank you.
Go to Congress. They're the ones that set these rules.
Okay, any other questions? And lastly, Number Eight, Resolution Number 2023-02-012R.
This is Habitat's request for development of three single-family homes. This round, there's one in Urbana and two in Champaign. And just a reminder that these funds can be used throughout the county, minus the Village of Rantoul, but otherwise, they can be used anywhere. So them building homes in Champaign still meets the goals of the home program.
Any questions about this? Go ahead, Mary Alice.
Sheila, I know at one point, we had the number of Habitat for Humanity homes that had been built in Urbana, but I can't remember what that number was.
I can email that to all of you. I do keep track of how many they do, and Urbana still is the leading community that they've developed in.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I don't see any. Do I have a motion?
I will make one big motion to move all of these into an omnibus. Can I do, Phil, can I move it into an omnibus on the consent agenda? Is that allowed? All right, I'm going to move the following in omnibus to the consent agenda. So Resolution Number 2023-02-07R, Resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium for First Followers, CHODO, certification for PY, not FY, but PY 2022, and Resolution Number 2023-02-008R, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement for First Followers, CHODO developer PY, must be project year.
No, it's program year. That's the-
Program year, thank you.
The federal program year.
Okay, 2022, and Resolution Number 2023-02-009R, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement with First Followers, CHODO, operating program year 2022, and Resolution Number 2023-02-010R, Resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium, Habitat, CHODO, certification for program year 2022, and Resolution Number 2023-02-011R, A Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat, CHODO, operating program year 2022, and finally, Resolution Number 2023-02-012R, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement, Habitat, CHODO, developer, program year 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Any further discussion? James?
Yeah, I wanted to add to what Grace said earlier. I want to thank Mr. Mitchell for coming out and sharing his experience with this program. It's always helpful when we have partners that come and tell us a little bit about how things are going and how it's working out. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else have a discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, so next item is our continuing discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act. Our mayor is going to lead that discussion again, and Diane, you have the floor.
Thank you. For those of you just joining us, just a reminder, we're continuing the discussion for the tentative allocations for funding for proposals submitted to the American Rescue Plan or ARP funding. These, we're not taking final action tonight. We will, I fully expect that we will reach the end of our $10 million tonight, and we will then have the basis for a tentative list for consideration next week. Last week, 17 proposals were discussed. These were proposals that had been supported for funding by either seven or eight council members at varying levels. The total awards, the total from last week adds up to $7,507,496, so approximately $7.5 million. That leaves about $2.5 million left to allocate tonight. And we have eight projects left that were supported by either five or six or more council members. So, five or six council members. So what we're working with is the median funding allotment as a beginning point for our discussion, and it can go either side of that depending on where council lands. So first project that we'll focus on is the City of Urbana proposal for the Urbana Roof Repair and Replacement Program. The amount requested was $250,000. The median funding allotment was $150,000. Discussion, thoughts? Mary Alice?
So some of my thought with this program was that I did want to fund it. I didn't recommend funding it at the full amount, because I felt that in year three or four, we might have some programs that maybe didn't come to fruition fully, and we'd have an opportunity to fund more roof replacements. So that's why I went a little bit on the lower end, but I'm, I think 150 is what I said, so I'm completely fine with that amount.
The memo for this, or the summary for the proposal had indicated that this 250,000 was enough for about 15 projects, so that came to about 17,000 per roof, if you want to think about it that way. Any further discussion? James?
Yeah, and I recall that that request was based on the known demand that we had out there. So I think I like the way you're thinking about this, Mary Alice, because I put in for fully funding it, because we knew that every dollar could go to a roof. But I do agree with you that this would be something we should put, you know, as a place to spend money if not all of it is used.
Any other comments? Thumbs up for 150? Looks like six up and one down. Well, seven up and one down. Okay. Next one is First Followers for the Urbana Community Peace Hub. The amount requested was 158,400. Median funding allotment is 92,000. Comments? Chris?
I think this is a real important one. Of course, I want it just fully funded, but I think this, you know, begins to address, you know, gun violence as well as people coming home from the penitentiary. I think those are critical needs, and I would really encourage people to fund it.
Grace?
I had some more thoughts as well. I had for fully funding, just so they can successfully run this program for the time period. That's all I have to say on it, really. Sharice?
My understanding was that the peace hub was also regarding the female population that would be coming out of prison and re-acclimating, helping to re-acclimate that particular population, and so I don't, I guess what I, what I, what I wanted, would want to understand is the staffing of, or how they're proposing to do that. If there's going to be female, if they're going to have, like, they have mentors for the male population. If they're going to have the female population mentors as well and stuff like that. But I'm for giving it a starting, starting fund of what the median would be, because it's a whole new program, programming happening.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, so I had two thoughts about this program. One, I believe the lady who came and presented during that night had said that, right now, that she's worked with two people. So, I mean, I can understand when you're starting a new program, that you have to build up contacts and resources and everything. So I wasn't really willing to fill a full-time position with this, because it looks like it's not really off the ground yet. I'd be willing to fund a position for half-time. And then, I was, the odd thing to me was it says direct financial assistance, direct money assistance to community members, and I didn't quite know how that was going to be spent. So that was like 25,000. I know that in the past, in other programs with First Followers, they pay people to attend different sessions. I didn't know if the 25,000 was to pay the women that were coming in for that session, but I guess I would, those are my two comments with First Followers.
Grace?
I'd also be willing to say, you know, kind of hold on, hold off on it if we have questions that are pertinent to your funding, like if, you know, funding more or less depends on your answers to those questions, that I think it would be worth asking and getting an answer on them.
It would be preferable to try to allocate something tonight, tentatively, which can still be adjusted. Chandra?
I sort of agree with Mary Alice. It seemed like a very new program, and if they've only gotten the opportunity to work with two individuals so far, maybe that's all they have the capacity for, and so giving them funding to hire maybe one person part-time to see if they can, you know, increase their numbers, and then that allows them to sort of show that they have the ability to run this program, and then they can seek further funding elsewhere. But since it is still a new program, and I sort of thought the ARP funds were to maybe not help new programs, but to help bolster existing programs too as well. So it's kind of iffy to help start something new from off the ground, you know. So I think, like you said, maybe funding a half-time position or giving them something on their budget that we definitely want to fund. Like, if it's, if money is going toward, you know, particular individuals for certain things that helps them, you know, transition back home better, then we fund that.
Any other comments? So we look at the median. Thumbs up, thumbs down? Thumbs up on the median? 92,000. Well, there's one, two, three up. Okay. And one, two, three, four down. So that's not, is there another number you want to work with?
I do remember a previous time when we gave First Followers funding, I think it was $50,000, for something to help for housing and for them to get phones and stuff like that. If maybe we can fund that amount because of the fact that, what Mary Alice was saying, that the presenter said something about that she had helped, she had been helping like two, two women that had come out. That's not a bad startup, a cost for, you know, something to get started as far as, if you're in fact helping people re-acclimate into their community and so on and so forth, I think that would be a good start. And then, because we seem to give, I'm sure there's some other grants and such that if they need, if they need other grant money, it seems to me like they might be able to actually get other grant monies for, to carry through, let me put it that way. But I think for good starting cost, I think we could start with 50,000.
Mary Alice?
So I took the amount in their budget, which was 158,400, and maybe the easiest thing to do is say we'll fund half of it. So I guess that would be roughly $78,000. It's not that much more different from the median, but it seems like it has a justifiable position. That's just, I'm going to pose that to everybody.
78?
Well, 158 divided by-
79,200.
There you go. 79,200. So it's not that far off, but it's-
Grace, or Chandra, whose hand was up. Grace?
I would say for me, I feel like we're getting colder to what I would settle on. I was suggesting if anything, higher, so I don't know if, how others who were not on board were saying, but I mean, for, for me, I'm not looking to go lower to get an agreement here for me than the median. If anything, I would suggest more. I mean, and at the end of the day, sure, if that's, you know, what majority go with, it's, you know, definitely more than nothing, for sure. But if anything, I would suggest higher.
We have a proposal tentative for 79,200. Is there a thumbs up or consensus on that? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, there's enough. All right, we're at 79,200. Okay, next item is the City of Champaign Township, Stride's Low Barrier Shelter, 70 East Washington. That funding requested was $2,985,199. The median funding allotment at this point, 750,000. Comments? Jay?
Yeah, I found this one challenging, because it's a vital service in our community, but I have very significant concerns about the lack of long-term planning for this. So I think the median is a reasonable place to show that this is, you know, addressing the need is something I think everyone on council is committed to, but I'd like to see more from Champaign, City of Champaign Township about what their plan is for sustainability, and if they're expecting a sustaining commitment from the City of Urbana, that there's clear communication on that moving forward.
Any other comments? Grace?
I see and appreciate Jay's point about the long-term sustainability. I think it's definitely something to consider. For me, I had this for, I don't remember, but I think higher than this, but I think also at this point, I was keeping my mouth shut, because apparently if I say higher or lower, it's going to go the other way. But I think this is just a really important service for the whole county, to have a drop-in center where people can go. I think it's really vital when someone's out needing immediate assistance for the night or the day to be able to point someone somewhere, and I would absolutely not want to lose that resource. So I agree that we need some longer-term funding, and I think this is at least some support to help get us a little further until we can get other funds. So I think the median is okay with me.
Any other comments? Thumbs up for median at 750,000. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. 750,000. And I'm trying to keep a running total as we go along. Are you doing that, Will? Okay. Thank you. Next one in, that had six or more allocating funding is the Housing Authority of Champaign County, which is the Single Room Occupancy Project, and this was to renovate rooms at the Econo Lodge. So the requesting amount was 500,000. Median funding allotment was at 300,000. Chandra?
I'm just going to, again, say that the Housing Authority has opportunity to get funds from someplace else. So I don't know if we need to fully fund all of their programs, but just, I mean, of course, an SRO is something that is the next step after, you know, in the housing, what's it called? I want to say continuum. I was going to say timeline, but that wasn't it. The housing continuum. So yes, it's necessary and needed, but I also think that if this organization has access to other fundings, tax credits or whatever you want to call it, then they should be pursuing those as well.
Any other comments? Sharice?
I suppose my question is, is the Housing Authority funding the entire updating and transformation of the Econo Lodge right now?
Sheila could answer that question.
No, they are not. If the project moves forward, City of Urbana and Champaign County funding will be the majority of the funding in the project.
Because I've noticed that it, because the Econo Lodge is in our ward, and it's right down the street. So I have noticed that there's been some definite restructuring, not restructuring, but, you know, updating of the outside and everything else. So how is that being taken care of right now?
Last time I toured it, which was in November, it's in really good condition. They had some problems with window leakage, so that's why you saw all of the exterior work being done was to take care of that, but it is in really good condition. And it is being operated still as a hotel. It's not vacant.
Okay. So when would this transition happen where the Housing Authority would take the Econo Lodge?
I'll have a better update in- I'll have a better update in March on where the funding stands and a timeline for you. Right now, we're trying to get through other pots of money, and then we'll sit down again, um, with a pro forma and have better information for you.
Okay. And my other question is, how would they go about making this a long-term, a long-term, uh, thing to happen, or are they still going to try to also use it, is also going to try, they're going to try to use it as a hotel as well, in, in addition?
No, the funding that's going to support the program will require it to be used for permanent affordable housing units for a minimum of twenty years. So, that's just a requirement of the funding. There'll be land use restrictions put on the property that put that in place, as well as agreements, um, for case management that we will require to make it successful. Thank you.
Any other comments? Chandra.
Another question for Sheila. Was this project eligible for HHI?
Yes, it was.
Did it apply?
No.
Okay.
Wasn't that, wasn't that also a thing with HHI, though, that you were funding more of the, what was it, the projects, and then the longer-term development was going to come back around in the next cycle, right?
For those who applied for long-term projects, like, um, the Carl Tiny Homes, See You at Home projects that applied, the development projects, they are going to be reviewed once the, um, either addresses are located for some of them, or the financial package is complete, and then we will bring those back to council for review. But there was funding, available in the, um, HHI funding for this project.
I see, but this one didn't apply, so they're not in that process?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, we have a median on the table at three hundred thousand. Their consensus, support for that? Chandra?
Um, I'd go two hundred thousand, especially if they have that HHI pot available, too.
Therefore, support for two hundred thousand.
I agree with Chandra.
Thumbs up on two? Okay, all but one. All right. So, we're at two hundred thousand for the SRO. Next item is Solagrotia Farm, which is the community farm expansion for, um, fresh food production, engagement, and consumption. The amount requested was seven hundred fifty thousand. The median funding allotment was two hundred seventy-five. Comments? Okay. Are you ready to take consensus thumbs up on two seventy-five?
John?
Yes.
So, we did this with the last, um, last time we were talking about this. If we go ahead and give them two seventy-five, is that just towards the overall project, and then they have to come up with the other funds, or is it to a specific portion of the project? I guess that would be my question.
My understanding is that this is not the total project, so it's for a portion of the infrastructure on the property, not operations.
Right. Um, so, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out. You can, you can buy, build one, like, something bigger, right, if you have more money, um, but, or, like, there's office space and a washroom, and there's like different components and so forth. Are we just saying, well, here's two hundred seventy-five thousand towards this whole big project, and if you don't get the whole big project, then you don't get the two seventy-five? Do you see where I'm coming from?
I do, and that's, what are your thoughts? Grace.
Um, I think some, which I also appreciate Claudia's input tonight and some of the others, and that I also would like to go back to revisit that one of the Champaign County healthcare consumers, because when we were doing that and drifting from the median and trying to make it incremental chunks, that that might not have been the best thing for their programming. So, I think that that's also, you know, a fair point, that it seems like there will be a whole nother process from here about drafting the contracts and figuring out what each organization can do. So, I think that's also, you know, I guess instead of speculating or going back and forth, just when we get to that point with, here's the amount, what do you think is the reasonable contract, and how can they whittle down their proposal for, if there needs to be tangible things for specific items, then they can help figure that out, I think.
Jaya.
I, I'm just going to say that I, this is another one I struggle with, because there is a lot of good, but there are also a lot of other needs, like, related to housing that I personally would prioritize. So, I, I think for me personally, that the median would be the maximum I'd feel comfortable with, um, not because they're not doing important work, but because they're talking about a build-out versus, you know, funding that could go towards providing housing for, for people, as one example.
Chandra.
Yeah, I completely agree, Jaya. Um, it's, it's hard to want to fund something to, to be built, even though in the long run, it would definitely help urbana residents with food insecurity, which, you know, we know that exists here. Um, but, yeah, I, what was the median again?
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five. Yeah, even, even that feels a little high, and, and sort of going off what Grace said to just, you know, come to a, a figure, then go to them and say, what can you do with this figure, and then that's how we write the contract. This is the, the number we came to agree on, and then, you know, write in the contract how they would, you know, spend that money, versus us trying to say this is for, I don't know, six rows of corn, or whatever, so.
Yeah, the, the application was for infrastructure. Okay, so we, I hear, I, am I hearing, what figure am I hearing? Two seventy-five? Median? Um, two seventy-five, okay. We'll tell, two up. Okay, that's not going to do it. Is there an alternative number?
I'll go with what Chandra suggested, which is two hundred. I think that's the number you suggested, Chandra. Oh, you said, well, let's, let's, let's meet in the middle and go two.
And what is that number? Two, all right. Thumbs up on two hundred. Count one.
I'm more with the number that you said, one fifty.
All right. At one fifty now? Do I see? All right, we're at one fifty. All right, now we'll move on to the three remaining, three projects that had received allocations from five council members. First is the Champaign-Urbana Champagne Independent Media Center. The request was for one forty-nine, one hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred three. The median funding allotment is seventy-five thousand. Comments? Chris?
Um, I won't be voting. I have an appearance of a conflict.
Jaya.
Yeah, I think there were some very specific infrastructure costs that were one-time that would increase accessibility, that I would be supportive of, of funding. Was the, that was the logic that I, I had behind my recommendation.
Grace.
Um, I was also just looking at the little bars and trying to figure out how we got this median out of five. Oh, because you're counting zeros as a number, probably? I think that answers the question. Okay. Interesting. Yeah, because this one was split. We had some zeros and some full fundings. So, I was in support. I support, um, funding. I think that it's, you know, not a huge ask, and a really great service that will provide a public space for a lot of, you know, good community support, for job training, community events, all sorts of things, um, going into the future for quite a while. So, I think it's an important investment that would last for a while. So, I would, if anything, suggest more, but obviously, the median is better than nothing.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I agree with the lack of, um, sort of free meeting space in Urbana downtown area. I think it's important that we, you know, increase accessibility to the one that we do have. So, I'm, I'm in favor of the median.
James.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to, I would support more myself, because, um, this is going to provide space for youth programming in a, in a way that I don't know that we've hit on with any of the other projects that we've seen. Um, so, I, I, I support the median, but I would support more.
Mary Alice.
So, my thought was with the infrastructure, right, the, similar to what Jaya was talking about. Um, the, the budget has basically personnel, and then a whole bunch of construction costs, and supplies, and so forth. So, I would be completely fine with funding them for all of the remodel of that room and space. Um, so I think the median comes pretty close to that.
Well, let's try the median first. Thumbs up for the median? Three, four, five, six. Okay, that does it. Seventy-five thousand. All right, the next project is Habitat for Humanity, first-time homeownership counseling. The request was for fifty thousand. The median funding was twenty-two-five. Comments? Sharice.
I voted, I voted, I actually wanted to, to make sure that this particular project had some kind of funding. Um, and, um, when I was doing my list, I kind of ran out of money before I got to them. But I, I, I think it's important for people to understand that, um, when you're, when you're buying a house for the first time, it's a, it's a daunting thing to do. And, um, I feel like our homeownership in Urbana would be, actually, would benefit from this, um, because people need that kind of counseling, I, I, I believe. And it, it is, um, it is a, uh, an experience that, um, most folks, when they think about buying a house, they just think, you know, that it, they don't realize all of the steps that have, that go into doing that. So, I think that this type of counseling would, would benefit people who, who really want to own property, and maybe, um, the first people in their, in their families to ever own property, you know. So, I, I think this would be a very good program for, um, for people that are trying to make that accomplishment, make, achieve that particular thing.
Mary Alice, and then Jaya.
So, um, I'm one of the people who said that we shouldn't fund this, not because it's not a good program. I, I think it's an excellent program. And if I remember correctly from previous consolidated social service funds, they've asked for funding for something similar. Uh, it might not be exactly the same program, but, you know, my thought with ARPA was, this is a one-time thing, right? So, let's invest in the community, you know, where it makes sense to invest. With the housing counseling, it's something that hopefully would go on for a long time. And since I've seen them apply for other grants before, I know that other funds come from other places for this particular thing, which is why I didn't include them in my allocation.
Jaya.
Well, Mary Alice, that's what I usually say, but I actually recommended funding for this one. Um, I suggested, uh, funding the portion that they said were for, would be in Urbana. They said usually about half of their applicants are in Urbana, and I certainly don't, I think it's unreasonable to say that we would want this to be specifically for folks in Urbana.
And a reminder, the median is at twenty-two-five. Any other comments? Is there consensus for the median at twenty-two-five?
I just also suggest we consider maybe like twenty-five is just like half seems like more. Again, it's sort of the issue, like, what is, what is the meaning of twenty-two point five if, as for fifty, if it's, you know, half of their applicants, or half the amount of time, or one position instead of two, or whatever it is. It seems like half, to me, makes more sense than twenty-two-five.
Hearing, okay, twenty-five thumbs up? Okay, that prevails. We're at twenty-five. And then, the last in this group, where five council members supported funding, is the Carl Foundation Hospital, Hope Village Tiny Homes Community, intensive case management for chronically homeless and medically fragile homeless individuals. The funding amount requested was two million dollars. The median funding allotment is at six hundred seventy-five thousand. Chris?
I voted that we fully fund this. Um, Tiny Homes, uh, kind of took me by surprise. It wasn't my thinking in terms of providing housing. Um, but I got on board, because for one thing, uh, the two most powerful entities in downstate Illinois are involved, the U of I and Carl Hospital, so at some point, this project could be finished. I also, uh, Champaign County Healthcare Consumers has a proven track record for decades on case management, so that was a very big positive. And, uh, the understa, I mean, while Tiny Homes thirty units seems inefficient compared to a, you know, single apartment complex, um, we have to understand that this is designed for the medically vulnerable, who need isolated housing. Um, and it would, this would be permanent, this would be, uh, you know, be used for decades upon decades in the future. So, um, while it's unconventional and a little surprising, I think the right kind of groups are running it, and it, it does, it's a definite need. This comes up a lot. People that have low income or no income, having medical problems at the same time, they need, uh, isolated housing. So, I, I would support it fully, but I'll grab whatever I can get.
Jaya, then Chandra.
Yeah, I, I recommended half funding, quite frankly, just because we only have so much money to spend. Um, but I think this is a critical need. Um, it, you know, we're talking about folks who might be too vulnerable to utilize other housing options. Um, and so I know folks get squeamish when organizations that have access to under, other funding get involved, but I think that focus on the work, um, that Champaign County healthcare consumers are proposing as part of this project, um, and, and again, just the, the need that this would be filling. Um, this is upfront cost, their one-time cost of getting this off the ground, um, that would have a long-term meaning impactful, um, impact, I guess, on our, on our community.
Chandra.
Yeah, I, I echo what Chris and Jaya has, have said. Um, the medically fragile and the chronically homeless are, um, populations that we see as a gap when it comes to housing. And so, I think this is a very unique and innovative idea to, um, to sort of help that population get what they need. Um, I, I was glad to hear that both Carl and U of I have put, you know, a million dollars toward this project. So, they're, they have some skin in the game to make this work. Um, and so I think that giving them, at the bare minimum, the median is, is what, at the least we can do. I think I had them fund it for a million, but I don't know if we have that much left to give, so.
Mary Alice.
I, I think most people have already said exactly what I wanted to say, so I'll, I'll just say ditto to all three of them. Um, I, I think that this is a unique opportunity for us. It's, um, an interesting idea with a lot of big partners that are pulled together here. Um, one thing that I really liked was the supportive services. So, it's one thing to give housing to a group of people, but you also have to bundle it with the supportive services. So, I really like that the healthcare consumers are going to be taking a lead on that. I know there's been a lot of confusion amongst the community, um, in terms of, is this money going to Carl? Who's getting this money? And at least from everything that I've heard, all the information that, that both Carl and Claudia have provided, this is not money that's going into Carl's coffers. All right, so, um, I, I am in support of funding this. I would be in support of six fifty, I'd be in support of up to a million if we had a million. But, um, I, I think this is a really nice opportunity for our community to fill a gap that we just haven't been able to address.
What's our total at now, Will? I knew you were going to ask that, Chris. Okay. I understand, I understand. I'm just trying to figure out where we are. Jaya?
Well, Will kind of made the, the point that I was going to make, is, you know, as we've been working through this process of suggested allocations, right? And so, I, I just want to raise that of like, those are suggested allocations. I do think that a million feels to me like the minimum we should contribute to this project, and that's what I would propose. I do think that a million feels to me like the minimum we should contribute to this project, and that's what I would propose.
Is there, are you ready to vote on the median or do you want to change the number?
No, I have actually.
Car, or Shereece.
This sounds like a good idea. I guess my que, I have questions as to where this is going to be located. How will it be funded for, in a permanent way? How will, how will it be staffed? Because when I read this, I read something that, that is definitely going to be, you know, we're talking about people who may not be able to be housed elsewhere. And that, that type of thing. But I also know that you have to have serious case management, administration of this. And I just wonder how, how it will be kept going. But mostly, where's, where are you going to locate? Where, where the, where is this Tiny Homes community going to be located? I do wonder about that. And I wonder about it because different places where I've lived, it, it's always, these types of, of, of projects are always placed in an area where you have, where the most vulnerable people already live. In other words, the ghetto. Or in the case of Urbana, probably more or less in north of University Avenue. Where is this going to be located? Who's going, and, and how is this going to be maintained? So that's my question, that's been my question regarding this whole thing. How is it going to be staffed? Because I'm, I feel that, that it's, it would, it would require people with many letters behind their names to be, to staff it, which means many zeros behind that first number. So how are we gonna do that with such a shortage of social workers and psychologists? People that work in this particular type of area, not to mention also healthcare people. How is that going to be financed and will it be, will it be sustainable? Or is it something that goes on for two or three, three, maybe four years? And then you look up and we don't have, there's, there's just not the possibility of it, of it sustaining itself. How is it going to be sustained? So that's my worry.
Chandra.
I mean, I wouldn't, I am probably a thousand percent certain with Carl and U of I on board, given such large amounts, that they wouldn't let some, something like this flop.
I'm going to tell you, I don't depend on one of those places that you.
Or, okay, that's fine, personal opinion. So I don't, and, and the application said that it would be healthcare consumers doing the case management. And we know that they are a reputable entity for case management and, and care of people. So I feel comfortable giving them this money. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that we have to worry about something like that. And I believe the addresses are Ben. I believe that's what Sheila told me, right? The, for the project potentially, yeah.
James.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of the median, and I might be supportive of more than that. But there have been several points along the path where we've stayed, I'd say, a little bit lower and said we might want to revisit it if we got to the end. So I would, I would encourage us to stay with the philosophy that we've been going. And if we go back or we, we say we're done with the list at this point and review, if this is one of the things that we go back and increase it from, the median, I would be supportive of that. I think all the other changes we've done have been specifically about what number makes sense, like twenty-five thousand rather than twenty-two-five, or what parts of it fit into us. So I'm not saying I won't support a higher number. I'm just saying, let's finish our first pass with the philosophy we've taken and then go through another pass.
Mary Alice.
I'm, I'm fine with, with sticking with that philosophy. I think it's a good philosophy because, you know, things are gonna come out in the wash, as Claudia had said today. You know, some things that we hadn't thought about are gonna come up as we go through these final estimates. So I would be, I'm gonna propose a number of seven-fifty. That gives us about quarter of a million dollars still to figure out where that quarter of a million should go. So I'm just gonna put, throw that on the table.
Grace.
I was thinking the same things in lines with what James and Mary Alice have just said. I'm okay with the median. I think seven-fifty also sounds reasonable so that we can go back and revisit some. And then also another thing, big picture, I would really be curious in seeing how much funding for our eight different funding goals. Because like Jayah's saying, you know, like you care more about housing than this thing. But like, those are both goals that we have. And so, you know, if we're valuing one more than the other, you know, maybe just, you know, get on the same page with that. Maybe we have different things. So I would really be curious in our layout, you know, have we given more to two goals and not really any to the other six? And so I would be curious in taking a bigger picture, look at things. And I, I agree, I don't want to limit ourselves by over allocating everything and having to whittle down. We can go with, close to the median and then see from there depending on how our goals and priorities are.
I'm hearing Jayah.
I'm just gonna suggest one more time, a million personally, because we're talking about American Rescue Plan funding. We're talking about healthcare and we're talking about housing. To me, those are COVID needs. And I think it's half of what they've asked for. To me, that feels appropriate.
James.
I'm gonna go along with the seven-fifty that Mary Alice suggested.
Well, I'm gonna start with seven-fifty and we'll see where that goes. Thumbs up or thumbs down? Okay, that's thumbs down. Which way do you want to go? Let's go to a million. One million? One, two, three, four. What?
Four in favor.
Four in favor? And four against, and three against? Are you at thumbs up or down?
I'm gonna be thumbs down.
Okay, so we're at, this is for a million. And keep your thumbs where they need to be. Okay, one, two. Okay, those are down. One, two, three. And I'm down, four. So somewhere between seven-fifty and a million.
I'd be happy going with the median.
Let's go for the median, six-seventy-five. One, two, three. Okay.
I'm, I'm just gonna go up to eight hundred.
I was just gonna say eight-fifty.
Yeah.
Eight-fifty?
Eight-fifty's fine.
Eight-fifty's on the table. Thumbs up or thumbs down? One, two, three, four. Okay, eight-fifty. And again, this is tentative. And that is the last item that had a total of five or more council members allocating funding for. So the question now before you is, do you want to go back and revisit the tentative allocations that you've made over the past two nights? James, I do have one piece of information that you had requested that I do have for you.
Well, the first, the first thing we have to confirm is that we're comfortable stopping with going any deeper in the list.
Well, that's sort of where we are here.
Yep, yep. So, and then I, then I would encourage us, I really like the idea of after completing the first pass, doing that analysis of how the funds line up with the eight goals for the next pass. I know that means putting a further conversation to a future meeting. I know that makes things take longer, but I, I, I think that'd be really helpful for this final, what feels like might be our final pass.
I think that's reasonable, but we do, I do hope we can stay on the schedule of being able to vote on the final allocations by the end of the month because organizations are waiting to hear. And, and we really do need to get it done.
I think there's high hopes for that, for next, the next meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Because we don't have a crazy, unless there's five other presentations that are gonna appear on the.
No, we have, we, we are, the ARPA funding is a top priority to get done in February. And we're pushing some things aside to get it done staff-wise. So, so we're on the same page here.
Can we, can we all agree that we're not gonna go any further down the line?
Can we, can we get a number first from Will? Where are we at now? Okay, then. So that's a good question there. So now the, next question is, is this where we're gonna stop? Thoughts on that? Grace.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Will should repeat that because he just said the number without his mic on, so nobody at home heard.
Okay.
So there's been nine million, seven-hundred-eighty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-six allocated, leaving two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-four dollars left out of the ten million dollars.
Well, congratulations, first of all. Pretty darn good. Okay. Is this where we want to stop? Grace.
I am okay taking, as I suggested, next week, looking at the buckets and taking that final pass then. I would like to, as I mentioned, go back up to revisit the other Champagne County Healthcare Consumers one. To, I would propose that we go with the median or closer to the median, since that was one that I think we adjusted in, you know, what we thought was reasonable and helpful increments. And we've heard was not necessarily. And I was trying to think, you know, in, in fairness here, I think that was the main one that we tweaked because of what we thought were increments. I think the others were not that case.
The question on the table, though, is do we stop with these proposals and not add any other proposals?
Oh, I see.
Hear what you're saying.
I see. There are, there, there is one in the maybe group that I would still like to consider.
Any other thoughts? Mary Alice.
I, I'm good with drawing the line now. I think we have a good set of, of things. It's possible that we know that there's a big gap after we do that, re-putting everybody into the different buckets. But I'm good with stopping where we're at.
Just so folks know, from here on out, the other projects on the list received support from zero, one, or two council members. And there was one project that had three people allocating funding. But much, much lower level of support compared to the ones we've just considered. Any other thoughts on ending or stopping where we are? James.
I would suggest stopping where we are and focus on the list we have.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would go for stopping, but I am willing to entertain what Grace has to say.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get there. This is just, we just have to figure out where we're gonna end.
Well, I don't know if he was talking about the point that there is one in the maybe group that I would like to still consider. I don't know if that's what Chris was referring to.
I'm good with stopping.
Okay. Yep, okay. The information I needed to convey was a question that arose last week related to the steer place renovations. And you had asked about some of the individual components of the project. I spoke with the Housing Authority today. The total project budget has actually increased to approximately thirteen million from six million. But you had specifically asked about the cost of asbestos, and they don't have a firm budget for most of the project. But estimates for asbestos removal totaled five-hundred thousand. And roof replay, repair was five-hundred thousand. Those were the two, the numbers that she was able to give me. And that's a question that came up last week. And that was the Housing Authority steer place renovation project. Okay. So we've got plenty of time. Are there any projects you want to revisit this week in terms of adjusting amounts? On the current list? We'll just go down the line, I think.
I agree with Grace's suggestion to go back to Champagne County Health Consumers and go to the median. That, that was us trying to be strategic in terms of funding, but it sounds like it didn't work out that way, so.
Okay, so the median proposal was five-hundred-ten-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-three. You allocated four-hundred-sixty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-three.
I know we talked about making this just a flat five-hundred thousand or something.
With what, five-hundred?
Five-five.
So I think one point with this one, we were suggesting how it was gonna be broken up. So I think clarifying that if we're making a new recommendation for funding, that that would be, then that, that process of allocation would be determined as part of the contract. So we wouldn't be dictating, you know, how many staff members for each year. I think that was an important aspect of that. So while we're revisiting the number, I think it's also important that we clarify that we're removing that stipulation.
Sure, okay. So I'm hearing five-hundred thousand. Are we ready to thumbs up on that, thumbs down? Two, three, okay, that goes to five-hundred thousand. Adjustments you have in mind? James.
Given the information on this steer place renovation, do we want to make that number fit at least one of the two things that we were interested in supporting?
What was the amount that we allocated towards that?
Three-seventy-five, I believe.
I think you allocated three-seventy-five. And asbestos was estimated at five-hundred. They don't have an estimate on the HVAC, the heating. You mentioned a roof.
I'll just point out that if the suggestion was to make it up to like five-hundred thousand to cover one of those, that I think we also don't have that much remaining without cutting stuff down. Because would that change, we've got just over a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand left.
You said we had one-seventy-five left? So it'd be one-twenty-five to make that a hundred, five-hundred thousand for the asbestos removal.
Okay. I'm hearing five-hundred for asbestos, and you'd like to make that a condition.
The one that I was, had in mind for going back through and putting more money in, if available, was the Cunningham Township Assistance, because I feel like that one was cut decently low, below the ask. And, you know, a partner that we have a track record of efficiently helping people in need. So that would be my vote for putting any remaining stuff.
Okay, so for next week, we'll look at the priorities and how these allocations align with the identified priorities for ARPA funding. Do you want it by dollar amount or by number of projects or?
Both.
Okay. We'll have a tentative funding list based on the past two meetings. Is there anything else that answers to by next week?
Yeah, one thing. I'd like to get more information regarding the Hope Village. A lot of the stuff that I brought up, like the location, how they, how they think that they'll be able, how that will go, how they're gonna, how it's gonna be staffed and, and continued or sustained.
I'm not sure if all of that is available, but.
Well, just something, something to, yeah.
We'll see what we can flesh out.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the result of about a year of pretty intense work. So thank you, everyone. And we're very close.
All right. Thank you, Diane. Next on the agenda is council input and communications. James?
I just wanted to let people know that at the school board meeting tomorrow evening, there will be a discussion of a project for the begin of the renovation of Wiley School, which is gonna focus initially on asbestos abatement. It will require the school to be closed. And at this point, the community is gonna start to be engaged on what the future of Wiley School might look like. It's been a neighborhood school for quite a long time, about 35 years. But there are other, there's a presentation available on the Urbana School District website that goes through a number of options that the school district might look at for that school, which could include dual language program, magnet school, sixth grade collector school, and neighborhood school, district offices. There's some options out there. But it's time for the community to get engaged in what the future of that resource looks like.
Anybody else? I think Chandra beat you to the punch there, Chris.
Okay, I just, reflecting on Black History Month, the theme this year is black resistance. Despite an inequitable social system, African-Americans have found viable ways to survive, advance, and thrive. We have nurtured and protected our physical and intellectual autonomy through innovation, lobbying, and legislation, and most often by helping each other as a community. Historically and today, black people have worked the political angle to seek their rightful space in this country. And that's exactly why I'm proud to sit in this seat on this council. Every improvement in the black quality of life has been achieved through struggle. Gestures like the proclamation the mayor did today are a good start. But if we are to see real change, we need to follow up with a plan for implementing specific initiatives and measuring their impact. That means setting some ambitious but achievable equity goals, like ensuring the makeup of senior administrative staff reflects that of the community it serves, and tracking progress toward these goals. I'll end with this quote from John Lewis. He said and advised, "Do not get lost in a sea of despair. Be hopeful, be optimistic. Our struggle is not the struggle of a day, a week, a month, or a year. It is the struggle of a lifetime. Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble."
Grace?
I had to follow with an applause first. Will said, thank you for, thank you for sharing. Yeah, definitely appreciate that. Just wanted to throw in some thoughts about the ARPA process. Wasn't quite sure when it's been the time, and we've had a lot to work to do to get through. So I'll just use my three minutes for input to just thank everyone who applied. I think it was really great to see all of the applications from all the organizations doing things in our community that are doing the work for the goals that we want to see as the city. And so I'm really honored to have the presentations and see the applications of all these groups. I appreciate that whole process and the staff at RPC and the city who have helped us along the way. And special shout-outs to Will and Carol for putting together these things and coming to the meetings with us. Like I think I've said before, I never thought that $10 million would feel like such a small amount of money in my entire life. Yeah, but somehow it does now, because we have such a, such a need in so many great organizations. And so I'm honored to be a part of this process, although it's, you know, it has been a lot of work and a lot of time, and it can be challenging and frustrated. And I'm often, you know, outvoted on things, and I just really appreciate that we can still work together to figure out the best ways to allocate these resources to the community. So I appreciate all of the community input and those staying engaged, and looking forward to see how these funds can be put into action. And we can, I'm excited to see the impact, to see the homes that are built with it, to see the programs and the impact that all of this has in the end. So thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Mary Alice.
I'll just follow up a little bit on what Grace said. I mean, I'm sure people watching this meeting take place over the past couple of city council meetings and committee meetings might seem flippant, like we're going through in certain numbers. But I know that everybody, from Will to Carol to Diane, and then all the city council members, we have all spent countless hours listening to people's projects, reading people's projects, really trying to think deeply about this. So now we're just kind of coming to the tail end of that whole conversation. So I do want everybody to know who applied, that we took everything very seriously, that we really tried to be fair and equitable as possible throughout this whole assignment. I'm sure not everybody got what they wanted. As Grace said, she wanted more money for something, less money for something. I know Chris said, he's sitting right now next to me, so I know, and myself as well. So I think this was a good medium. I was very happy with how council worked together to come to a resolution on some things. Some were very contentious and some weren't, but that's just the way things go. So I just wanted to thank everybody involved in the process for all of your time and commitment to doing this.
Anybody else? Okay, with nothing else to do, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you to the public for joining us tonight, and we'll see you next time.